Thank you. Welcome and good evening to today's Monday, November 5th, and welcome to the Foxborough Board of Selectmen's meeting. I'll go over the agenda briefly. We have three public hearings scheduled for this evening for liquor violations. One at 7:30 for Showcase Live at Patriots Place, one at 8:30 for Bar Louie's at Patriots Place, and one at 9:30 for the Foxborough Mandarin located at 369 Central Street. We also have a request for an extension of hours from Showcase Live from 1:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. on New Year's Eve that was left over from the last meeting that we had, and we wanted to put it in context to the public hearing that we're having tonight. So before we begin, Ginny, do you want to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the Constitution of the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undegowed and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we will be reading into the record the notice for each public hearing, and because they are public hearings, the public is welcome to speak. So we'll open it up, we'll hear from Foxborough representatives, we'll hear from the different establishments, we'll do the discussion, and then we'll open up to citizens, I'm sorry, not citizens, input into public if they have something to say. Typically, we have the microphone over there, we did move them to the table, so when we invite to the public, if you don't mind and you're comfortable coming to the table to speak into the microphone. So at 7:30, the first public hearing is the liquor violation for Showcase Live at 23 Patriots Place, and the manager is Joseph Norman. If you could read the notice into the record.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing on Monday, November 5th, 2012, at 7:30 p.m. in the Town Hall Meeting Room, 40 South Street, Foxborough, Massachusetts pursuant to its licensing authority in accordance with Massachusetts General Law's annotated Chapter 138, Sections 23, 64, and 67, and all amendments thereto. The purpose of the hearing will be to review and discuss information concerning alleged violation of Chapter 138 that occurred at the Showcase Live, 23 Patriot Place, Foxborough, Massachusetts. All interested parties are invited to attend.
Okay. And so we'll invite, is there a representative from Showcase Live if they could come to the table? And just for the record, so people know, we're getting this information for the first time this evening, and the packets are rather lengthy, so if it looks like we're fumbling through it and didn't do our homework, it's intentionally that way that we hear this for the first time and for the public.
For the record, Peter Tam on behalf of National Amusements, and with me is Joe Norman, the manager of record.
Okay. Good evening. Kevin, typically Attorney Cassis would assist us, but how do you want to run this with respect to?
I'll be happy to serve in that capacity, Mr. Chairman. I'm well-versed with the facts and have done many, many of these hearings. I don't know what Attorney Cassis is, he may arrive during the proceeding. As Chairman, members of the Board, recently Officer Noonan conducted compliance checks. The result of the compliance checks are such that it's resulted in three hearings to be conducted tonight, and an additional three hearings to be conducted at a later date. In the past, one way that we have undertaken to expedite these hearings is to have the police officer basically describe to the Board with his witness what happened, and then if counsel, excuse me, sir, are you counsel for the Showcase?
I am.
Okay. And then if counsel is amenable to it, we step out for a few minutes, have a chat, and attempt to arrive at an amicable solution consistent with the Board's policy. That solution typically involves an admission of the violation and some sort of action by the Board consistent with your policy. The advantage to that, if the establishment is willing to do it, and in this case, this is a first offense, there are no other offenses within your three-year window in your regulation. That's important to remember.
Just to clarify, that's no offense in front of the Foxborough Board of Selectmen with our liquor license, but is that also with the state?
Within the three-year window.
Because there was one, way back when, in 2008, there was one.
Passed, yeah, but I'm saying when the last three years, there's violations that come in front of us with respect to the regulations, but is there anything that we're not aware of that has come in front of the state that has not come in front of us?
If it's come in front of the state, it's not subject of any action from us anyways. And there may be, but we wouldn't necessarily be aware of it. They're not under, excuse me, any obligation to notify the town. So generally, that's been proven to be a very efficacious process. The counsel for the bar owner basically comes back in after the brief caucus and indicates to the Board whether he wants to go forward with a full evidentiary hearing, or whether he's interested in making an offer to the Board with an admission of guilt, which is entered into the record as the first offense, and potentially a lesser punishment, if you will, than what might occur if a full evidentiary hearing is held. And that's been a good procedure that's been a service, I think, to the liquor establishments, and also had the effect of avoiding lengthy hearings before the Board. So I would suggest to the Board that you have Officer Noonan, after he's been sworn, and any witnesses, describe basically what happened, and then we take a brief recess so I can chat with counsel.
Counsel, want to make a statement prior? Well, let's do this, and I know I invited you to the table. If you could just take a seat back there, and let's listen to the representatives of Foxborough Police, let's hear what they have to say, and then open it up for your discussion afterwards.
Just so the counsel knows, Mr. Chairman, the full evidentiary hearing is basically the following, and I'm sure it's exactly what you've done before. There'll be a presentation by the police officers and/or witnesses. You'll have an opportunity to cross-examine anybody who's presented against you as a witness. Board will ask questions either during the hearing or at the conclusion of it. You'll be allowed to present witnesses in your own behalf. I'll be allowed to question them on behalf of the Board, or the Board members can ask their own question. Following presentation of the evidence, presentation of witnesses, cross-examination, any redirects that you want to do, Board will close the hearing. Once the Board closes the hearing, then they'll conduct a discussion amongst themselves without any participation from anyone else in the room about what their finding is and what their decision is in terms of punishment, if any. But that's generally the more lengthy proceeding that we would follow than sort of working something out.
I appreciate that, Mr. Pecos. And, Mr. Chairman, I fully appreciate that the Board needs to follow a process here. I think on behalf of National Amusements and Showcase Live, and I appreciate that the Board doesn't have all the facts before them, I think we would like to expedite this and take responsibility. I think the facts here are fairly straightforward, and to the extent, you know, I think it probably does make sense for there to be some summary of what occurred, and at whatever point you and your discretion feel is warranted, I would say a brief summary is all that's necessary. You probably don't want to rely on my summary, best off having it come from those that were involved. So, but we're certainly, I think, prepared to follow the course that Kevin has suggested.
Okay, fair enough. So if there's a representative, and I think we'll just do that, if the representatives from Foxborough can come, I see Sergeant Noonan and a few people.
Mr. Chairman, if we're going to proceed in this way, a suggestion, rather than swear the witnesses and have this be part of the evidentiary proceeding, because that becomes a little bit more formal, I think it is appropriate if Officer Noonan just describes generally to the Board what's alleged, and it's important to remember, this is what's alleged, not what necessarily is occurred, but Officer Noonan will describe what's alleged, and he won't have testimony yet. Just Officer Noonan will just describe to the Board what's alleged, so you have a flavor for what's at stake, when and if counsel comes back and puts an offer before you.
Fair enough. Thank you.
You got the special chair.
I got the low one.
Little joke we play. Usually we put the President and National Grid in this.
Evening, Sergeant.
Good evening. On September 27th, under the direction of Chief O'Leary, I conducted an alcohol compliance check on the licensed liquor establishments in Foxborough. Prior to that, a letter was sent to each, hand-delivered by a uniformed police officer to each establishment, notifying them that we were going to conduct such a compliance check. In this letter, clearly stated that we would do a new operation in which the underage operative would present a valid Massachusetts driver's license, which identified them as being underage 21. The reason for this was to make sure that they were, A, checking for identification, and B, had the capability of calculating the age of the person attempting to purchase the alcohol. On August 30th, the Foxborough Reporter ran a story on this, that we're going to conduct such a compliance check. On September 27th, with the assistance of Officer Barrett of the Stoughton Police Department, a 19-year-old female, whose date of birth was confirmed by her driver's license, assisted in the compliance check. Prior to this compliance check, I reviewed and read over the Foxborough Police Department General Order on Compliance Checks with Identification, and explained to the underage operative what was expected of her. During this explanation, I advised her that we weren't trying to trick anyone. If anyone asked her her age, she was to tell them that she was underage 21 and give her the correct age of 19. Photographs were taken of the underage operative both before and after the operation, and a breathalyzer was conducted to ensure that she had no alcohol in her system. Prior to this, I questioned her and made sure that she had never been to any establishment in Foxborough, which she said that she has not, and she also stated that she never drank alcohol or purchased alcohol within the town of Foxborough. The night in question, we went to Showcase Live. Prior to that, I purchased two tickets for the event because it's an all-ages show. Upon entering the establishment and presenting their ticket, Officer Barrett went in first. She received a green wristband, which allowed her to purchase alcohol. The underage operative then went in, presented her ID to the person that was manning the door. He checked her ID, even though it clearly stated that she's 19 years of age, he presented her with a green wristband, which allowed her to go into the establishment and purchase alcohol. Upon entering the bar area, the underage operative went to the bar, asked for a Bud Light, the bartender looked down, observed the green wristband, and then made service of a Bud Light bottle. The underage operative then paid for the Bud Light bottle, under the observation of Officer Barrett, and then left the premises.
Mr. Chairman, at this point, with that description for the Board, I would like to offer to the Board to have counsel and a representative from the company go in my office and see if they're interested in coming back and making an offer to the Board, including an admission of guilt, of that basic fact set. If that pleases the Board.
Discussion with the Board?
Can we ask a question about the circumstances at this point?
You shouldn't.
No, because now you'd be getting into the evidentiary hearing, and you really, it would be tainted if you were to do that, and depending upon what the decision you would make, once it went forward to A, B, C, C on review, you could have a problem.
Okay.
So it's basically, if you want to hear an offer and they're interested in making one, then it's got to be sort of cut and dried with no more than what you just heard, and if they're not interested, or you don't like the offer, you have every right to go back to a full-blown hearing where they have all their rights as well.
Okay.
Any more discussion?
I agree with Kevin.
So we just continue the hearing, just take a break, is that what it is?
You just take a recess for 10 minutes, and we'll be right back.
Yeah, just so everyone knows, I wasn't expecting an expedited process. We've got three hearings, one at 7:30, one at 8:30, and one at 9:30. So there's going to be a lot of breaks tonight, there's going to be a lot of downtime, so.
Well, depending how it goes. Because any one of these may go to a full hearing, in which case you won't have a lot of downtime, unfortunately.
Let me ask you, part of the process has been and should be, you know, if there's an admission, and then we move on, and then there's consideration of penalties, part of that process should be what steps are going to be taken so this doesn't occur again. At what part do you see that coming into this evening's discussions?
The counsel will tell the Board, it's my understanding, certain actions have already taken place, and he will describe those for you, and then make, and basically, it's their offer to the Board. It's not our offer, it's their offer to the Board. My only job is to advise him what typically the Board's done in the past in these sorts of situations, and they sort of make a decision if that sounds like something they're willing to offer you. And if that takes care of it, fine. If it doesn't, then you go forward, back to the hearing.
Okay. It sounds like you're all comfortable with this process. All right, so why don't we take a 15-minute break, we'll come back at, shoot for 5 past 8:00. And Frank, is there something you can put on the screen for the people that might be watching at home?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Ms. Chairman, members of the Board, I believe counsel for Showcase Live has an offer to make to the Board, which includes an admission of sufficient findings of fact to acknowledge violation, and as part of that, not to seek any contest of that, and then some additional sanctions that amount to a suspension, which are unusual, but that's because this is not a regular bar or lounge where you go in and serve. This is only open for events, so it has to be done in a different way. And he'll make that offer to you in a minute. I will report to you that the Chief and I have reviewed that, gone over it with him in detail, and we would both recommend it to your attention. With that, Mr. Chairman, counsel.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, this is, I believe Ms. Brew was going to pose a question, and this may help inform.
Thank you.
To Peter.
Thank you.
Kevin asks.
Yeah, okay. If it would be helpful, Mr. Chairman, on behalf of National Amusements, which runs this facility, and as Mr. Pecos has briefly described, this is a special events venue, and it's one at which, whether it's live music, or other special events or meetings, combined with dining, it's a, an establishment which is run with professionalism and violations, and potential violations are taken with utmost seriousness. Joe Norman, since the initial opening of this facility in 2008, there was, as was referenced, one violation within a month of opening, more than four years ago. Since Joe has been on as manager of record, there have been none, and he takes that very seriously, and so it's humbling for us both to be here. Upon notice from Sergeant Noonan and Chief O'Leary, Joe undertook his own investigation and consulted with both the sergeant and the chief, and he determined, as is fairly obvious, that the problem arose at the door, at the point of entry. That employee, who he was able to determine was working that evening, was promptly terminated, and that led to an internal review and consultation with the chief as to what could be done to avoid this in the future. And so what occurred, and it's somewhat human nature, is if you were to make a mistake at the door and card someone that is underage, and in fact, proper protocol was followed, the individual was carded, but there was just a mistake, and at the point of service, that wasn't questioned. So that needs to occur, and Joe has ensured that it is now procedure among all staff. So anyone who appears under the age of 30 is carded at the point of service in addition to at the door. That should, while not being 100% effective, we cannot guarantee, it should eliminate that, and that is the goal of National Amusements. So that is where we're at. In addition, I think it's important to note, Joe did instruct all staff to attend a refresher course, which was undertaken last week, and the venue also hosted the Assistant District Attorney's Alcohol Awareness Course, which was previously scheduled, and they do take this issue very, very seriously. So I want to impress upon the Board those facts as Joe's response to this incident. In terms of the offer, which Mr. Pecos has summarized, I think we are prepared to acknowledge the facts that would lead to a violation, and in this context, where Joe has addressed the consequences with his staff to eliminate this likelihood from the future, and because of the special event nature and the contractual obligations which he has to undertake, the suspension would be for two events, and it would require early cessation of service of alcohol at two events. One of which could be, if the Board chose, for the New Year's event, which is planned, which is also before you for the next matter, at which we were prepared to request an additional hour of service, we would instead simply request an additional half-hour of opening, an hour of opening, with no extension for service of alcohol. So if I'm making myself clear, the two events at which alcohol service would end early could be New Year's and at a special event that Joe would determine with the approval of the chief.
As Chairman, members of the Board, it was a little bit labor to come to this suggestion to put before you, because it's the nature of this business that they don't operate like a regular restaurant or with bar service. They're only in operation when they're having an event, so canceling, a suspension means canceling an event, but, you know, that would be an event that's already booked, presumably, because there'd be no way to cancel an event that's not yet happened. Cancellation of an entire event is a much, much harsher financial impact than would be a one, or two, or even three-night suspension of a regular bar. For that reason, we had to sort of do something hybridized here to put before you. That's why this is a bit unusual, and I didn't realize that, I had to get a little education myself. You probably know how the business operates better than I do.
The only other thing, Mr. Chairman, I would add that I neglected to mention is that in terms of a distinction, also based on the nature of this use, as members of this Board know, there is very close cooperation with the police department in all instances here for every event, and in fact, police staff are present at all events. Between two and five officers are always on duty. So unlike other establishments, there is always a police presence here in addition to private security.
Okay. Thank you. You finished with the presentation?
Yes.
All right. I'd like to open it up for the Board for discussion, and also because this is a public hearing, there may be people that want to speak as well. I'll leave it up to the Board, you want to discuss it for a while, or do you want to let someone from the public come up if they want to speak first?
Public.
Public, okay. Is there anyone in the public that would want to speak? Sure.
You have to come up here, David. You could just use this mic, Peter.
David Brown, 17, Marigan Wayn. Does it come through all right?
Yeah.
A couple of comments, questions, you know, I hear about this refresher course, and, you know, I think it would be nice if they would give you the details of it. In particular, I just find it amazing that anybody could take an underage driver's license in Massachusetts and not get the vertical and the horizontal correct, and that's what I understand happened here. As far as the event closing, I would, I understand that this violation occurred on a Friday night?
The 27th.
But not Thursday night. All right, so, you know, I would say, you know, you probably should try to personally have to pick the night that the problem happened, but that's certainly up to you how you want to do that. And, you know, I don't understand this business about New Year's, to be honest with you, it's just not clear to me what they're talking about. I know the one-hour extension is something they're going to talk about probably later. My understanding in the past, when the one-hour extensions have been given, we've tended to look at the record of the establishments and bother before you gave those one-hour New Year's extensions. I think you do the same kind of thing on, with some of the game day business that goes on. Those are my comments.
Okay. Thank you, David. Anyone else in the public?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made, second to close the public hearing. Any more discussion on closing the hearing? That all is in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, 5 to 0.
Just, Peter, can you explain the New Year's Eve event? You're saying something about you'll open earlier than you normally, I don't...
The, I think as a consequence of this incident, irrespective of the incident that we're here before you for...
Yeah.
We would have requested, and we did in fact, request an additional hour.
Right, from 1:00 to 2:00?
Yes. And as a consequence of this event, as part of a potential sanction, as part of the disciplinary process, we would not extend liquor service hours during that event.
But you were saying that you...
But they would remain open, and in a sense, it is a responsible thing to do.
Right.
Because it keeps the establishment open, it keeps people there.
So you would stop selling at the normal time, at like quarter of 1?
Yes. If the Board was amenable to that, then...
12:30 would be the normal last call, and 12:55 would be drinks off the table.
Right.
So the last hour and five minutes of whatever was happening would be without the accompaniment of alcohol. That's basically the change. Whereas ordinarily, if the Board granted this, it would be 1:30 last call, 1:55 drinks off the table.
If we okayed.
Right. So if you agree to this offer, then it's, they're staying open that extra hour, but not with liquor.
And Linda, the purpose here, we did not feel, obviously, we have to, we want to take responsibility for this incident.
Yeah.
At the same time, this is regular business, this was granted by the Selectmen last year, but we figure we need to address it with this Board, and if the Board is comfortable factoring that into the potential sort of sanctions...
Yeah.
Then that seems to make sense. If the Board is uncomfortable incorporating that, we can certainly just address that separately, but it is part and parcel of the same establishment, you know, doing business here, so.
And then there would be another event at which, and this other event, let's say it's...
The best we could do there is, Joe has a list of the events, but rather than, that he would propose one, he would review it, and the Chief would need to, it would be in the Chief's discretion to approve if that event was appropriate.
And that would be for the entire event, there would be no alcohol served?
No, it wouldn't be, that would ultimately penalize all those ticket holders who wouldn't be able to have wine with their dinner. It would mandate early cessation of service, an hour early.
So in other words, last call at 11:30 instead of 12:30, drinks off the table at 1:00, at 11:55 instead of 12:55?
So you're talking about two hours...
Correct.
...of service that you're losing.
Yes, exactly.
And this was, if you recall, this was, the Board has always had discretion to develop and implement their own sanctions, and that's always been a part of the regulations. With Lorraine and David Brown's work in the last go-around of the regulations, for which I was also involved... I was also involved, the flexibility has been maintained in those sanctions.
Right.
And one of them is early closure at 11:00 PM or 11:30. It's broadly within your discretion.
So closing is different than not serving?
Well, it would be not serving for two hours. And because of the nature.
One hour of each event?
One hour on New Year's Eve and one hour at another event. And the chief and Joe would pick that event. This, I mean, because of the fact.
Right.
I mean, if you closed them for an event, then they wouldn't have the event. But, see, they're only open when they have an event. So if you were to say to them, you can't serve alcohol for this event that you've already booked.
Right.
The penalty falls on the ticket holder more than the business, so it, and doesn't make sense. The only way that it makes sense is if you take an event that is going to be held, and they're forced to roll it back now an hour, New Year's and another event, then that makes some sense because there's a real loss of revenue there that would have otherwise occurred, just like there would be if you closed a bar for two or three nights, money they would have made, they would now not make.
So the, and in short, the consequence of simply closing for a period of days would not necessarily work, and it might be meaningless, so.
Right, right. And we already know that just a letter does not go very far.
Well, in this case, we'd certainly prefer a simple, you know, letter. And I think Joe takes his position seriously enough where he's had an unblemished record as manager of this establishment for more than four years. But if this board deems there to be additional sanctions necessary, this is what we're prepared to offer the board to consider.
We'll continue the discussion, but it's probably beneficial. You know, there's four different violations, four different steps that you can take, depending on the first violation, second. So just so everyone's clear, under the new regulations that you were party to, and Lorraine and David and the police chief, first violation is a letter of reprimand and/or suspension up to three days or both. And optional is with liquor closing hours of 2,300 hours, which is 11:00 PM, for 10 days. And where they're saying that they have not had any violations within the last three years, this certainly would fall under the first violation. So again, letter of reprimand and/or suspension up to three days or both, with optional liquor closing hours at 11:00 PM for 10 days. Continue the discussion.
So we could actually have the closing an hour early, we could actually do it up to 10 days rather than the two days, right?
But the events are, yeah.
No, but there would still be an hour.
If there were 10.
It's not a suspension for three days. The option we have is for a closing an hour early, but we could do it up to 10 days.
You do have that discretion, Mr. Chairman, and you probably have more discretion. But as, I think Lorraine will remember, the regulations contemplate, this is in the context of particularly egregious circumstances. And as you can see, it's drafted with considerable discretion to the board. They may consider the following guidelines. These are not, these are guidelines, they're not.
No, I understand.
And the letter of reprimand and/or suspension in the alternative, it's all given this board considerable discretion. But you're absolutely correct.
Would there be something in the files? Would a letter of reprimand be anyway, in addition to?
There'd be a letter that lays out, what you're really achieving here is an uncontested first offense. That's what you're achieving. In other words, there'll be no hearing tonight, there'd be no appeal to ABCC, it is documented and on the record, there was an offense, strike one. Now, that's what you're really getting. The fact that there'll be some revenue loss as well in order to make the message that the board is serious, that part of the two one-hour closings and New Year's Eve, that's a real, that's a real penalty. But the real issue here is the admission of a violation, and that's now on the record. So now, if something happens during the next three years, you're on to strike two, and much, much harsher penalties. And that's really the point of this with businesses' first offense, is to get it on the record. Were you to go through a complete evidentiary hearing, maybe you would determine it was a violation, maybe it wouldn't. They have every right to appeal it to ABCC. As slam dunk as this may seem, it is not always that way at ABCC, seen that happen enough times. So what you're really achieving here is the, is no contest about the first violation, and I think that's important. And by the way, the chief did indicate, these folks have really done the kinds of things that the board has imposed on businesses before, terminated the employee involved, done the education process. So it's all the things that you typically want them doing, and they've already done that.
Okay. Okay. I just had a question, if there was any discussion about, is there any type of reader system that is used when you're screening licenses, or is it just, you know, your employee visually looking at them?
I think now it's very careful reading. I don't believe you have technology, do you?
We have a UV flashlight, typically it's visual. But we do have.
And so there's no card scanner here?
You don't have a scanner.
No. But Joe has, I think this incident is good in some ways to reinforce training and reinforce policy. And I think it's a very good reminder for staff that they need to do their jobs, and there will be consequences if they're not. And so this is a, you know, this is a very serious issue for this particular establishment and for, and for this company. So, you know, they don't take this lightly.
Thank you.
Although our attorney isn't here, are attorney fees included in this offer?
There are no attorney's fees in this case, but I believe, if I remember correctly, there was an offer to cover the cost of our offices that had to attend tonight.
Yes, that's correct.
So that the public isn't paying for that.
Restitution to the community.
It's actually not restitution, it's just a generous offer to make the towns, the taxpayers whole. Have to word that very carefully because of, because of the way the statute reads. The board can't issue fines, and we can't coerce them either. But if there's a free and willing offer to make a gift to the town to cover our costs for this evening, that's always generously received.
It's definitely a different situation than most with consecutive days, whatever. You know, in the guidelines, it is, it's correct with the letter of the file, restitution if there was an attorney. And you offer a little closing early, you know, it's just very difficult for me to grab that concept that, you know, it's not a certain day or a certain event, because it's such a different situation. I wasn't really aware of that. I don't think it was anybody aware of that, the way it's on the daily operations, so. I would go with the decision the town manager and the police chief made tonight. I'm okay with that. But if this does come up front of the board again, I don't think I'd be too considerate of the difficult situation the next time. So I would hope that it won't be next time. And I would strongly urge you to get the scanners. It seems to just take the human error out of everything. I would own an establishment if I didn't have, I would never own an establishment without one in my own. That's the way I feel about that. I just think it'd take the human error right out of it. I'd rather do something different, but I can see where it's going. I'd just rather just go with this at this point in time, or take everything else, it should be along, drawn out process, and we're just going to get to the same fact. I would make a motion if it was at the time to do so, Mr. Jimmy.
Just a, something that said that's kind of struck me, it's not an egregious violation. I mean, there's over-serving and the serving after hours.
I don't think, Mr. Chairman, I don't think I said that. I don't want to minimize this.
I picked up one, all right, maybe I misunderstood, but serving to someone that's under 21, when it's, you know, for a little time, I flipped through this, it just seemed so obvious. You got the, you know, it was in the newspaper, you got the letter, the license was, you know, vertical instead of horizontal. It doesn't get any simpler than that. And to miss, you know, to have a teenager come in and be able to buy it, you know, cutting them off an extra half hour, it's tough for me to say, okay, we'll move on, and hopefully we don't get the second violation. And I understand that you are taking the steps and you are doing the training, but at the very least, not having a scanner in there, where it's so simple and it was missed, how would you not have a scanner and put that on the table as number one step to fix it?
That's a fair point. So, you know, I think while we can't speak to it this evening, Joe has been consulting with the chief on this, and I think he'll be reporting back on whether or not he's going to implement that.
Okay. Any more discussion? I would expect that would be a condition, at least before New Year's, if there's a scanner in place.
Is one entrance?
Yes. It's cheap, 1,250 bucks, correct? Somewhere around there?
I think the better technology is around 3,000.
3,000.
I do think, I don't disagree if, you know, and I know in working with chief myself, his preference for particular technologies, what I'd want to ask of the board is, this is something they're certainly prepared to undertake if it's viable with their other policies. So, you know, the carding and bracing at the door has always been in place, but ultimately it is also up to the server. And the, you know, I can't say that we are prepared absolutely to implement the scanner, but you can certainly expect that Joe will be following up with the chief on that, on the viability of that. And it is up, it would be, as part of this offer, it would be up to the chief to determine, you know, that additional event. So he would be within his prerogative to inquire as to status at that time.
So what, just so I'm clear, the, there's two things that you're in front of here tonight for, one was obviously the violation, and the other one was a request for an extension from 1:00 AM to 2:00 AM.
That's right, that's right, Mr. Chairman. So the other request that is before you is actually a request, and that is to extend operating hours for the establishment until 2:00 AM without extending alcohol service.
And then part of the carryover from the first part is you would stop the liquor sales serving at 12:30?
That's right.
And currently, what is the hours that you're allowed to serve?
11:30 or 12:00?
Right, right now, they serve 1:00 AM is closing, last call 12:30, drinks off the table 12:55. So that would remain unchanged. That, in other words, the request is they'd be open another hour till 2:00 AM on New Year's.
But still stop serving at 12:30?
But there'd be no alcohol for the last hour.
So had we not been before you, we would have two additional events, at which time Joe would be able to serve for a total of two additional hours during significant special events, New Year's being one.
Okay. Any more discussion? And I think before we come up to a conclusion, I think someone has to make a motion of fact.
This is in a hearing? We're not doing the hearing?
Mr. Chairman, the appropriate motion would be to accept counsel's offer on behalf of Showcase Live, and we will write these terms up. I'll have Lou Cass, our special counsel, write this up, confer with counsel, make sure, you know, the terms are exactly agreed. But the minutes will reflect the following, so if I state this wrong, please correct me, that there is an admission of sufficient facts to determine, to support a finding of a violation, and that there will be no appeal of that decision, that there will be a one-hour early cessation of liquor at an event to be determined by the manager of record and the police chief, that the request for a 2:00 AM opening for New Year's Eve will be approved, but that the current hours for liquor service will remain in effect, i.e. 12:30 last call, 12:55 drinks off the table. And then finally, they're offering a voluntary donation to cover the police officers' costs that attended tonight.
No.
And the legal costs?
I'm sorry?
There are no legal.
There's no legal.
Well, there are no legal costs.
Well, if we're going to write that up.
If, well, if there was any, yeah, would be, it would be more than a couple hundred dollars if it was that.
Absolutely, yeah, you're right. Good call.
Lou might have reviewed the facts.
I just want to make sure that.
Yeah, because there is legal cost, you're right.
The officer from Stoughton would be taken care of as well as.
The officers mean four people.
Okay.
Peter, is that amendable, legal fees also?
Yeah, I mean, aside from speaking with Lou for 10 minutes, I don't think there's anything significant here.
I doubt you'll get a bill. Lou doesn't usually give bills for 10 minutes.
And there's a letter of reprimand also to?
Well, this is a letter of, this is essentially a letter of reprimand. It's a finding of a violation.
All right. Does this information go to the ABCC?
Yes.
Okay.
You have an in or not to appeal, right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I'll make a motion.
Just another question. With respect to the scanner, can you explain, to implement a scanner process, other than the cost of it, what would be the concerns?
I just don't know, Mr. Chairman. So I don't want to, you know, these guys have a number of different facilities, and there's a reason why they do things in certain ways. So for Joe or myself to say, we will absolutely commit to do this here, there may be good reason, I can't identify why it would not be, and that's why I acknowledge that, you know, I know in working with the chief, where he wants a particular technology, he wants something implemented, he will certainly inquire with Joe to say, why have you or have you not done this?
Yeah, my concern would be that, because, especially where it's a mixed age function, I mean, you could have somebody who's 24 bringing his 19-year-old girlfriend, who looks 24.
Yeah, that's a risk at any establishment.
But the scanner would help to avoid problems if you have the scanner.
We certainly don't.
For the functions that you do, just for your own benefit, I would think a scanner would be something that you would be interested in so that something like this wouldn't happen.
We do not disagree.
But you can't put that.
I, look, we cannot unilaterally implement new policies without, there's a, there's a whole corporate structure here. And so they implemented immediate changes based on this, as we've acknowledged, and this will certainly be part of the discussion that will be commenced after we leave here this evening. And if you'd like for Joe or myself to follow up with a letter to this board explaining what our conclusion was on this, we certainly are not shirking any responsibility there.
Well, I'd like to know that the discussion was made with the corporate.
That's right. We can do that, and we can report to you and copy the chief on correspondence.
I mean, the other option we have is we have a hearing in two weeks for the other three. What I'm concerned about is trying to find some parity. You know, last week we had, or last issue we had, it was two or three days, I don't know, for a violation, for the first violation, and we closed them down for two or three days, I just don't remember. We've got five more after this. And I understand it's a little bit of an anomaly, but a half an hour here and an hour there, and then we're dealing with five other ones. You know, let's put this off to the next hearing, and you can come back and say, you know, you considered the scanner, and the answer is no because of X, Y, and Z reasons, or the answer is yes, and then we close it at that time.
I think, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate this, and I want to. I think, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate this, and I want to be as judicious with my time, Joe's time, but particularly with your time. I don't want the scanner to be a stumbling block here. The, and remember, this is an anomaly in the sense that there is a police presence, usually multiple police presence, at this establishment at every event. And that you cannot say about every other establishment that's before you. They absolutely have to do the right thing here, and so we're not shirking responsibility. As far as the scanner goes, if there is a reason why it cannot be implemented, we will be explaining that to you in writing. And I, I do, I just can't be in the position of implementing corporate policy as far as this establishment goes.
I think, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, if the board were to consider requiring scanners, you'd probably want to be doing it on a universal basis, not a case-by-case. Because frankly, the advantage it gives to the business, you know, is not something that, a change in policy like that shouldn't be the product of a particular violation. It should be the product of this is a decision the licensing authority wants to make on behalf of the community. And you are, you have authority to do that through an amendment of your regulations. My suggestion of the board is you accept counsel's offer, that they will report back in writing, here's what we considered, here's what we decided, irrespective of what they do in the singular case. If the board wants some exploration done about your rights to impose scanners and all that, we'll be happy to do it. Because my suggestion to you is, don't do it on a case-by-case. Do it, period. If you're going to require it, require it for everybody if you have a legal right to do it. I don't frankly know, really, if you've got a right to require that as a consequence of a, of a single violation hearing. You know, we'd really have to get some advice from counsel, and we'd probably have to have a conversation with ABCC. But as a matter of policy, I think you're on a lot stronger ground universally applied. If you want that done, not as part of this hearing, so direct, and we'll, we'll take care of it.
Diana, can you read back Kevin's statement for the motion?
Well, I would just make the motions based on previously agreed-upon conditions between the town manager, chief police, and the establishment. It's already on the record.
That Kevin stated?
Yeah. So, the board's ready for a motion? I'd make the motion that the board selectmen accept the offer between Showcase Live, his attorney, and the town manager and the chief of police. That was stated earlier in the minutes.
That motion may be seconded.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries 5-2.
Mr. Chairman, the board, this would probably be the logical time to take care of the New Year's Eve request, since it's, it's part of what you just did, but you'd actually need a separate motion. And that motion would be to allow the 2:00 AM opening, but with no change of liquor sales from current. Or if you wanted to state it more explicitly, 2:00 AM opening, but liquor sales to cease by 12:30, and all drinks off the table by 12:55. And say it either way, but, but it does require an extra motion to allow them to stay open till 2:00 AM.
Motion allows Showcase Live to extend its open hours to 2:00 AM on New Year's Eve, but not to extend alcohol-serving hours to remain the same, close alcohol last call at 12:30 AM, and all alcohol off the tables by 12:55 AM.
Motion made second by Lorraine. Further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries, is everyone's hand up on the yes?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries 5-0.
I'd just like to thank the officers and everyone who participated in this, and wish you luck.
We thank the board for their time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I was a little remiss. We should have opened up the other hearing and then continued it. But Lorraine, can you read the legal notice for the 8:30 hearing?
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing on Monday, November 5, 2012, at 8:30 PM in the Town Hall Meeting Room, 40 South Street, Foxborough, Massachusetts, pursuant to its licensing authority in accordance with Massachusetts general law annotated Chapter 138, Sections 23, 64, and 67, and all amendments thereto. The purpose of the hearing will be to review and discuss information concerning alleged violations of Chapter 138 that occurred at the Bar Louis, 232 Patriot Place, Foxborough, Massachusetts. All interested parties are invited to attend.
Kevin, you want to proceed with this one the same way we did?
Chairman, Mr. Chairman, if that meets with the board's approval. One note, however, this is a second offense, because you had a hearing with this establishment, and it's in your package, so you can take a look at it while I'm chatting with counsel. That violation occurred, well, you had the hearing on August 31, 2010, and you'll have to check the date in that material we gave you for when it, when it occurred. And that resulted in a letter of reprimand and a three-day suspension. So, that needs to be taken into consideration, because this will be under your regs as a second suspension, which carries a much more serious potential for a penalty.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, Sergeant Noonan will.
Please, thank you.
I don't know if there's a representative bar here, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Well, why don't we hear from Sergeant Noonan? Thank you.
On September 27, 2012, under the direction of Police Chief O'Leary, I conducted an underage operation of alcohol compliance check of all the licensed liquor establishments in the town of Foxborough. Notice was served that such a compliance check was going to take place. It was handed delivered on August 3 by a uniformed police officer at Bar Louis'. Newspaper article was also printed in the Foxborough Reporter on August 30, outlining the new policies and procedures the Foxborough Police were going to undertake while conducting these compliance checks. This letter in the newspaper articles clearly stated that during the operation, the Foxborough Police would be engaging in a compliance check in which the underage operative would present a Massachusetts valid license that clearly indicates that they are under age 21. Prior to conducting the compliance check, the rules and regulations were explained to the underage operative and the undercover police officer that was present during the transaction. During the explanation of the rules and regs, it was clearly stated that the underage operative would only use her valid Massachusetts ID, which is vertical and clearly states that she's under age 21. The underage operative was explained, if the establishment asked for her identification, she was to present it, and at any time they asked for her age, she would tell them their, her correct age. On August 27, the underage operative entered Bar Louis', made her way over to the bar, under the watchful eye of Officer Barrett of the Stoughton Police Department. She took a seat at the bar. A female bartender came over, asked if she would like, if she could help her. Underage operative stated that she would like a Bud Light. The waitress asked if she wanted a bottle or draft. The underage operative stated that she wanted a bottle, at which time the waitress requested her identification, which she presented. After inspecting the identification, which clearly states that she's under age 21, she gave the identification back, apologized for the time it took her to look at the identification, and apologized again that she was looking for the expiration date. She then asked if she wanted a bottle or draft. The underage operative stated a bottle, at which time the waitress then served her a Bud Light bottle.
Okay.
Kevin? If counsel is here for Bar Louis', then he and I, with board permission, will adjourn to my office and attempt to see if they'd like to make an offer to the board.
Is that fine with you, counsel?
Sure.
And just for the record, we did start, we didn't call us in to open up the hearing for 15, almost 20 minutes late. Was that fine with you? You didn't lose any? Okay, thank you.
Could I borrow your copy of the regulation, Lorraine? Kind of memory of first offense. Forgot the second. Thank you.
Frank, can you? All right, we're back from break, and both sides, Foxborough and representatives from Bar Louis', had an opportunity to speak and hopefully come to some conclusions. But for the record, if you could just introduce yourself, please.
You need to open up the other public hearing for us, and we need to go back to this.
Just to continue, yeah, it's 9:30.
Yeah, you're right, at 9:30.
Yep.
So, it's 9:30. If Lorraine would read into the, to open, and we can continue?
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing on Monday, November 5, 2012, at 9:30 PM in the Town Hall Meeting Room, 40 South Street, Foxborough, Massachusetts, pursuant to its licensing authority in accordance with Massachusetts general laws annotated Chapter 138, Sections 23, 64, and 67, and all amendments thereto. The purpose of the hearing will be to review and discuss information concerning alleged violations of Chapter 138 that occurred at the Foxborough Mandarin, 369 Central Street, Foxborough, Mass. All interested parties are invited to attend.
So, being 9:30, the hearing is open. Can I have a motion to continue till later in the evening?
Motion to continue.
Second.
Motion made seconded. More discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So, welcome, gentlemen. I'm sorry if you could introduce yourself for the record.
Yeah, my name's Tom Demakis. I'm an attorney representing Bar Louis', and to the right of me is Rob Hovis. He's the manager of Bar Louis', and to the left of me is Bill Cochrane. He's the general manager and the district manager of Bar Louis'. And we've just met with the police chief and Mr. Pakos, and we're prepared to make an offer. As you know, this is a second offense in the last three years. The first offense, just to clarify, it was a three-day suspension held in abeyance. And I know that your guidelines for second offenses are three to 10 days. And we think that we should be a little bit toward the lower end of that range, and that's, the offer we're prepared to make is five days. And the reasons, I think, are important to get on the record. First of all, even before this happened, Bar Louis' had some very good procedures in place. Their staff were all TIPS trained. On their four busiest nights, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, they have, they have doormen, five-to-seven doormen outside, starting at 9:00 in the summer and 10:00 in the winter. And the purpose of these doormen is to check IDs and check people that are previously intoxicated and prevent them from coming in. And after 9:00 or 10:00, depending on the day of the week and depending on whether it's summer or winter, the doorman ID everyone, and no one gets into Bar Louis' on those nights after 10:00 if they're not at least 21 years old. In addition to that, they have two police offices there every Friday and Saturday night, starting at 10:00 PM. And they've confiscated a lot of phony IDs in the last few years. They've gotten a lot of complaints from people that have been turned away. But this thing happened, and it happened a little after 8:30, when this minor was served. And she was served, and she was a minor, and we admit full responsibility for that. You know, the one thing, but I, but I started off by saying, we think we should be toward the lower end of the three-to-10-day range. And one of the factors that makes me suggest that to you is that the server, the minor came in, the server asked for the ID. She looked at the ID, according to Sergeant Noonan, for like a minute, and somehow she didn't do the math right, or didn't process what she was seeing correctly, and she served the girl anyway. But it wasn't a failure of process that Bar Louis' had set up. You know, they were trained to ask for the ID and to look at the ID, and she did those things. And she made what I would suggest to you is a human error, where she subtracted incorrectly, or figured out, you know, age incorrectly, and ended up serving her. So, the other thing that I would really like you guys, you folks, to consider is, in my opinion, after this happened, and in direct response to this happening, Bar Louis' took five very strong steps in response. Number one, as soon as Sergeant Noonan came back at 11:30 and informed Bill Cochrane what, what had happened, the server was terminated on the spot. Number two, Bar Louis' hired Jim Staples, who's the former supervising investigator for the ABCC, in charge of, for 15 years, he was in charge of training for the ABCC. He has trained the Foxborough selectmen, your predecessors, I don't know, maybe some of you. He has trained the Foxborough police chief. And last Friday, he trained Bar Louis' personnel, at which all servers were, attendance by all servers was mandatory. And he also trained the Norfolk County District Attorney's Office last Friday. So, they hired the best in the business to train. He has a, he has a program called Safe ID Check, and he certified all the Bar Louis' servers' Safe ID Check. Also, Mr. Cochrane has put in the budget, you know, one of the things about bartenders and waiters and waitresses is that they, there tends to be a lot of turnover. So, he's put in the budget enough money to make sure that Mr. Staples comes back frequently enough that when there's new personnel, they'll be trained as well in the Safe ID Check program. Number three, they made a policy determination to no longer accept vertical identifications. Vertical identifications, as you probably know, are licenses that are issued to minors. And whereas all our licenses are horizontal, the minor's license is vertical. And they're good for five years. So, just because you have one doesn't mean you're a minor. If you get your license when you're 17, you have that vertical license until you're 22. Or if you lose your license and get a new one when you're 20, you have that vertical license until you're 25. So, it's perfectly acceptable. There will be adults over 21 with vertical IDs, but they made the policy determination to no longer serve anybody with a vertical ID. Because this was a vertical ID, and even though a red flag should have gone up to the server to particularly scrutinize it, apparently she did particularly scrutinize it, but she still didn't get it, that it was a minor. Number four, they, it has been their practice for a long time now to ask anybody appearing to be the age of 35 or younger for an ID, but they're now going to go a step further and add another layer, and they're going to also ask that person, how old are you? So that subtraction won't be the only recourse, you know, in trying to determine the age. And five, they have purchased already state-of-the-art scanning equipment sold by Advanced ID Services, which is the company recommended by Jim Staples and the company recommended by the police chief. It is the top scanning equipment available. It's cost about $3,500. And they have not only purchased it, but they've purchased a subscription to update the software on a monthly basis, so that whatever new identification scams come out, or the software will always be updated. And as you, Mr. Sullivan, I'm sitting here telling you that, in my opinion, this was human error. She looked at the license for a minute, and she made a mistake that resulted in this unfortunate situation. And you noted during the previous hearing that the scanning equipment eliminates human error, or at least minimizes human error. And I agree with you 100%, and they agree with you, and they've already. they agree with you, and they've already proactively went out and purchased it. So in response to this situation, they fired the server, hired Mr. Staples for training, and they've already had him come in and trained, and they've got him in the budget for more training, made a determination not to accept vertical identifications, which is obviously an, that's a revenue diminisher, because they're turning away customers at the door, and now asking people who appear to be thirty-five or less how old they are in addition to asking for the ID, and made a significant investment in the state of the, the best scanning system out there. So between the fact that they had a good process in place, that this particular server just, she followed, but it was, she followed unsuccessfully, and the fact that they redoubled their efforts to prevent this from happening again, we would make an offer of five days. We discussed dates when we met with the chief and Mr. Pakos, and the five days that we would offer, Sunday, November 25th to Sunday, to Thursday, November 29th. That Sunday in particular is a very important day, because it's a big football day, and it's the Sunday of Thanksgiving weekend, which the day before is, or two days before is Black Friday, and that shopping spree usually continues all weekend, so that's a day that they would anticipate a lot of business. So we hope that you can find your way to accepting that offer. In addition to which, by the way, you know, the standard stuff, you know, no appeal, and also will, I'm not quite sure what the phraseology is, or the correct terminology is, but will make a gift to defray the expenses of a police department in connection with this matter.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Demarcus. Before we open up for discussion on the board, is there anyone from the public that wanted to speak where this is a public hearing? Ron?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Are you finished?
Do you want to add anything, Bill?
Second.
Motion to close the public hearing made and seconded. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Public hearing is now closed. Discussion amongst the board?
Well, I guess Kevin, we haven't really heard from Kevin and with the chief and...
Chief and I both recommend this. The last violation, there was a three-day suspended sentence imposed by the board. So this is a second violation, and while the board has the discretion to levy three to ten, you know, generally, again, the importance of this offer is that the second violation is clearly established, and there is no contest there. As you can imagine, the likelihood of being overturned at ABCC is far greater the further up you go for a second, so we avoid that. We avoid a legal expense. We get it on the record. Bar Louie's has clearly shown that they are contrite. They've done all the things that you asked a previous business, including putting in the scanner, and not only putting in the scanner, but putting in the one that the chief wanted. Fired the person involved. And a five-day suspension during that particular timeframe is very meaningful in terms of the financial impact that it'll have on this business. Not that our goal here is to punish businesses, because it's a symbiotic relationship between businesses and the town, but it needs to be underscored that this is serious and the board's not tolerant of this, and will be far less tolerant if there's a third event. And I think this captures all of that, and I think it's, you know, is sufficient in terms of the message the board wants to deliver. I did advise counsel and the manager that the most important element of any offer is that the business clearly makes it clear that they understand that they've made a mistake and that they're serious about not making another. And in this case, Bar Louie's has gone further than any other business I've, in my time with you. They've gone further to take, to make amends than anyone I recall recently, so that's all, I think, a good sign.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin.
And the chief can comment, but we both concur. This is a good recommendation.
I feel strongly in beating with them. This is a fair process of justice for our community as well as for the business.
Okay. Thank you, chief. And because you're not on a microphone, basically, if you didn't hear him from home, he was basically saying that the chief concurs. So second violation is suspension of license from three to ten days with liquid closing between eleven and, for thirty days as the option. Open up for discussion with the board?
I appreciate what you just did. I really do. I think you just put all the cards on the table and just let us, you know, let me, I'll see, people myself, I appreciate it very much. I think you stepped up to the plate, and you're just trying to put this behind you and move on and put a better business model in place. I'm actually a little taken back that you offered those days, being how important they are to business. And I actually think it's a little bit too much. I would suggest that the board would probably split that by taking three in that time period, maybe two after the first of the year. I think by taking the five idea, I think it's, I know you agreed to it, but I think it's just a little bit too much for that kind of economic loss in that, in that season of the year. And I know businesses are struggling, and I would think that if we could be amenable to doing, you know, a three and a two after the first of the year, I'd be more obliged to that.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Rest of the board?
I, well, I appreciate the fact that, of everything that's, you know, all the steps that are being taken. I only wish these steps were taken back, you know, a year or so ago. You know, we, I don't remember if you were here or not, Rob. Were you, were you here for that meeting? Kind of said never wanted to see you again unless I was, you know, having a meal at your establishment, and that, you know, you showed willingness to make changes and stuff. And, you know, I think that if things had have been done, then, then we wouldn't be looking at this. And if you're agreeing with the five days, you know, I almost want to say, you know, it's the five days. I appreciate that you're doing everything that you can, though, and I think that, you know, taking the responsibility kind of off of the folks that are, that are cutting folks that leave it to the machine, especially getting all the updates, because these kids are smarter than we ever thought. You know, I mean, they can come up with something totally different tomorrow, and we would never see it happening, but this company is great, and I know that the chief does recommend it, so if they have the ability to do that, I think that's a great thing. I just, you know, I hope that you're up here for like an expansion sometime or something instead of something like this. I, you know, I, disappointed, obviously, but great presentation that you did, Tom, and it's, it's great to see. And Bill, as a district manager, I'm sure that you're, you should take pride, though, in all the steps that you guys are making. You really should. And, and I, and I hope that they're all on the record and recorded in the minutes, and, because if you go back to the other, the minutes that we were sitting here a couple years ago, you know, we were, you know, worried for you, because it was, you know, you're just opening up and kind of getting your bearings and everything, but, you know, we told you, take advantage of the chief, because he's got all these things in place, and he knows what he's doing, so that's all I wanted to.
Thank you. Jenny, Lorraine?
I just want to have a clarification about the scanners. Will there be a scanner at the door so that everyone who enters the establishment, they will have to show ID and be scanned? And so you, even during like the afternoon, you have someone at the door?
No.
So what, so what, what would stop a nineteen-year-old from coming in in the afternoon?
Well, we're open for normal business during the afternoon. We don't, we're only twenty, twenty-one and up after ten o'clock in the summertime and or nine o'clock in the wintertime. So any minors can get in the door at any, any given time. It's up to our servers who have to sit through the, who go through the ID check classes to double-check everything during the daytime, just like the rest of normal business.
And that machine will be available to them at all points of view.
Oh, absolutely.
If there's a questionable ID or, or someone of underage, they can walk up and scan them at all moments of time.
Okay, when you said you weren't going to allow the under-twenty-one, did you say you weren't going to allow them to come into the business, or?
I mean, if they're having lunch or eating food, yes, obviously. We will not serve them any kind of alcoholic beverage.
Okay, even, okay, I get you. Okay.
Lorraine, anything further?
No, that was one question I had that process, so thank you. I appreciate your offer, and I think it's good and solid. The five-day suspension is a serious penalty, and it makes me understand how you understand how serious the situation is, so I appreciate that. I just was curious, anybody else's thoughts about splitting it from five days in a row to three and two, as Mark suggested?
I just want to keep it.
Yeah, I'm just going by what they have offered and...
We won't object if you split it. We made the...
Right, right. But then, you know, could say, well, five days here and then five days in December, too, which we wouldn't do that, but, I mean, we could do that, but I think that's what they've offered and...
Yeah, and especially where it is on the lower side out of the three, could go to the ten. I wanted to say thank you to Tom. The reason, if you sat through the previous discussions we had, I voted against that motion, because I didn't think they were doing all they could do to take the human error out of it. What you're telling me, and from what I'm hearing from the sergeant, is that it seemed like it wasn't a policy, it wasn't a procedure, it was a human error. The person looked at it, and whether, couldn't do the math or didn't realize it, the scanner certainly was my concern last time, and that's why I voted against it. This one, you've put that on the table as well with the four or five other things that I think goes a long way, and I hope it helps, because, you know, the third, the third strike is, you know, we're talking a month closure, and I hope the scanner works, and I hope that we don't have to have this discussion again. So I commend you on, on coming forward with that, and I appreciate that.
Just, you know, I'm just a mouthpiece. These guys are the ones that have, before, I just met Bill tonight, you know, you know, first of all, I want to apologize for being underdressed. I'm pitch-hitting for a colleague of mine who's sick, but these guys are the ones that grabbed, took the bull by the horns and put all this stuff in place, so I'm just telling you what they did, but they're the ones that, they are contrite, they are concerned, they are very determined to be responsible licensees and good corporate citizens. It's very important to them, and not one of these things was my suggestion. This was all stuff that they did.
Very well said. Thank you.
And Jimmy, and to my point, you know, it's not often this happens, that this comes in, you're prepared, you deliver it, and you give it to us. So it's very easy to make a decision on the side of the table when this guy, it really is. For me, it is. I can't speak to the rest of the board, but I, I just want to stress one more time, if we can even do a two, two, and a one or something, I wouldn't want it to run five days consecutive. And I've never ever offered this, ever, being on the board my sixth year. I've always said, you know, I've been very tough, but I'm overwhelmed by the outpour of, you know, concern from this group. I really am. I think in reward to that, I think we should split it up a little bit and not run it in five days consecutive. It's the same outcome. It's five days. So if we go, what'd you say, November 25th?
Twenty-fifth to the 29th originally.
So you went to 25th, we went, we went a Tuesday, Wednesday, and the next week a Tuesday, Wednesday, and then one day in the next week or something. I'd be...
I mean, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, my only thought to that is, I think, coming in here, knowing that this is a second violation, I actually voted against the first one.
Mm-hmm.
It was a three-to-two vote. It was suspended. I wasn't happy with five days. I think I, I'm accepting five days because of all the steps that they said that they have undertook and will undertake, so, I mean, five days in a row is probably better than six days split up, is what I'm looking at, so.
Is the board split it up before in the past? I think we have, but I understand your point.
We may have, but, but the entity hasn't come up and said, you know, we'll take, you know, five days or whatever, either, you know? And it seems like they've, they've looked at their schedule and decided that that would be the week that they would do it.
I just have one more question. Is the scanning equipment in place right now?
Yes, sir.
It is? Okay.
Okay, any more discussion? Motion?
Motion to accept the proposal, the agreement by Bar Louie to admit to a second violation, implement the scanning device, and have a suspension of five days to begin on...
November 25th.
November 25th, and end on Wednesday, November 28th. Correct?
The 29th.
Thursday, the 29th.
Thursday, the 29th.
I'm sorry. Yep, the 29th, right.
Without appeal.
Without, without appeal and to cover expenses.
If I could suggest that you not have the scanner be a condition of the, of the punishment, because that would tend to be inconsistent. That's just something they've offered and put on the record.
Did the motion include the no longer accepting the vertical IDs and asking if you're thirty-five or older or younger? Is that, is that something that you're...
I don't know if we can do that either, because that would be certain precedence to the next case. I think it falls in line with the scanners also, because it's a legal form of identification. I don't think, they can have a policy not to accept it, but we can't put it on somebody else or them, as far as I would be concerned, you know?
I think Mark's right, Ms. Chairman. I think, again, that's something you'll want to do consistently through your regulations, if that's something the board's interested in.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so motion made, seconded?
Second.
Any more discussion on the motion?
I just want it on the record that we agreed to the five days because of all the things that Tom listed down that, that Rob and Bill have agreed to. Those several things meant a lot to my decision to have five days, so.
As well as mine.
I just want that on the record. It can't be part of the motion, then I just want it on.
Okay, further discussion? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries five, two, zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for trying, I appreciate it. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And thanks to the offices, once again, and I'll repeat that again in case you didn't hear me.
Round three.
Okay, the public hearing for, nine-thirty public hearing for the Foxborough Mandarin.
Motion to reopen the public hearing.
Motion to reopen made.
Second.
Second by Lorraine. All those in favor? All right. Five, zero. So let's continue with the same way that we did the other two.
Could you just make, ask the first question if this gentleman was brought, an attorney with him? Because I just see him by himself. Wanted to seek legal counsel with this matter.
How are you doing?
Good, how are you?
Yeah, my name is Wei Chao Kwan, the owner of Foxborough Mandarin.
Okay, I think, welcome. I think the question is, do you have counsel? Do you have legal counsel?
Uh, no.
Okay.
I don't.
Do you understand that you could, as recommended, to have legal counsel for a hearing such as this?
Uh, no, I didn't have. You mean, such as I have a... You mean, such as I have a lawyer come with me?
Most people would bring an attorney to a public hearing such as this where it's a liquor violation. And, you know, there's some penalties that go along with it. It's up to you, but most people do. And I think we would recommend that you would have legal counsel.
Okay. So, yeah, maybe I still have to talk to a lawyer, so I think, so today I can't do it now, so.
Oh, you say, I mean, hmm. What do you want to do about this?
Mr. Chairman, if the gentleman wants to have an opportunity of counsel and didn't understand that he could do that, then my recommendation, recommendation of the board is to continue the hearing to a date certain, meeting you'll have to name the night so that the gentleman knows exactly when it will be continued to. And you pick the night, we'll have to make the time flexible because I'll have to check the agenda. But if you pick another night, we'll continue it to that night.
I think we have, I mean, we have a hearing, I'm sorry, Selectmen's meeting next Tuesday. The following Tuesday is when the other three violations are on, which would be...
20th.
The 20th. So if we could pencil in November 20th, it would be the last hearing. It would probably be after 9:30. So I wanted to check with a counsel on that.
November 20?
November, it's a Tuesday night, November 20th.
Sure. Jim, the date, I mean? I thought, I thought, okay, good. I thought the Thanksgiving of the 24th.
What time are you starting that night?
It's the 22nd. Yeah, 27.
What time are you starting? Is that a regular standard?
I don't know. At this point, the times weren't scheduled, but I know there were three.
Yeah. Well, they had 9:30.
First, 27.
Seven? Okay. Would you want to come in half an hour early to do that? And rather than, because this one would then get scheduled at 10:30.
Yeah. Why don't we do this? We'll go back and look at our schedule because there's three other hearings.
Yeah.
It's probably going to be in the later part of the night.
Okay.
Wouldn't be first, second, or third. And each one is about an hour or so.
Okay.
Why don't you try to schedule, and we'll, our secretary will let you know what time.
Okay.
But it will be on the 20th.
Okay.
Again, it's not that we don't, if you absolutely want to have a hearing tonight, we're obligated to do it. But I think our advice is, because this has ramifications with the state and your licensing, you may not understand it all.
Okay.
You would get professional help on the attorney side.
Okay, okay. That's good. So November 20th, okay.
And that requires a motion, Mr. Chairman, to continue the hearing to the...
Are you okay with that?
Oh, yeah, okay.
Okay. A motion from the board?
I move that we continue the hearing for the Mandarin, Foxborough Mandarin, to be on November 20th.
November 20th. Okay, motion made, seconded?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. So we'll see you, we'll get in touch with you on the time, but we'll see you on the 20th.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Mr. Chairman, maybe in the future, we should, we send a notice of a public hearing to anybody because this has happened before.
It does say it.
It does say it?
Yeah, it does say it.
Okay. Apologize.
It happens, so. All right. That concludes the agenda items. We have a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Good luck at the polls tomorrow, everybody. Hope to see you there.